Well, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight, we're gonna go through all thirty articles of the special town meeting that'll happen October twenty first.
Twenty first.
Twenty first. Objective here is not to try and influence anybody to vote yes or no towards it, but just to give you the positive and the negative sides of all the articles, or sometimes the two positive sides. Why don't we start with introductions?
Andy Lazzart, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mike Wallace, Chairman of the Milford Board of Selectmen.
I feel bad for you guys. And now that I'm not, it's, you sit back and watch the, how would you say, why did you guys volunteer to be the goalie for the javelin team?
Well, you did it long enough.
Yeah, now I'm not. But we got thirty articles to go over this year, which hopefully will go pretty quick. The interesting question will be when we try and figure out which article that means the least will take up the most time.
That's right.
The famous chicken article.
Dog park.
Dog park, but the chicken article that went two and a half hours to debate whether you could have chickens in Milford.
It's important.
Hundred and forty million dollars went in twenty minutes, but the chickens.
Right.
Okay, let's go. Article one, ADA Improvement Plan.
Every year, we contribute a hundred and fifty thousand. That's been the plan, to do an orderly transition of compliance under the applicable disability laws. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring that number down in the relatively near future. We've been doing it for a while. I suspect we'll get a reconciliation at some point in the foreseeable future about how far along we are in getting that completed.
I think the definition that's up for grabs is foreseeable.
Well, also, Al, it's an article that we, you know, as you and Andy both know, we have no choice. We have to do, you know?
Well, we've been lucky that by putting a hundred and fifty thousand a year, we can show progress.
Right.
And we haven't gotten burnt by any regulatory authority.
Exactly.
You know, and luckily, the good Dr. Valani is the one that becomes the town pinata because we hand him a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and say, okay, stretch it out somehow across the whole town.
Well, as they always say, as long as you're showing some kind of an effort.
Yeah, I think regulatory wise, we're okay. I just, every, the school, municipal buildings, they all want their piece, and a hundred and fifty thousand sounds like a lot.
But it doesn't.
Or it doesn't go far.
No.
Number two, the easement, article number two, easement for the electric company onto water company property.
So you apparently know something about that.
Well, apparently, it's pretty straightforward. The water company wants more electric. To get more electric, they need a new line. There's some law that the electric company needs permission, an easement, to run a line from the public street through what they call private property. It's not really private, it's municipal, but it's not accessible. So basically, it's like if you wanna hook up sewer at your house or electric on your house, you've gotta agree to let them run lines to your house.
Right, makes sense.
Number three, Personnel Board, new bylaw changes.
Yeah, this is just, oh, this is, Al, this is coming, you know, from the Personnel Board, and all it is is just a, you know, reassignment of how we look at, you know, what employees' benefits are gonna be, whether it's a twenty or a thirty-five hour work week, and what they're, you know, it's just a, an enhancement to employee benefits.
This is purposes of allocation of vacation benefits.
Of holidays and vacations.
Right.
Yeah, I was not aware originally that municipal rules are twenty hours a week. I always thought like commercial, you have to, our company, you gotta be thirty-two hours a week.
Thirty-two.
But apparently, from municipal, once you hit twenty, you're eligible.
For something.
For something, and this will prorate the benefits.
Well, that's where you have to be very careful, Al, and that's a valid point, that when you come from the private sector on a daily basis, and then you deal with municipal government, when you make, you know, like normally, what you just said, we would say, well, wait a minute, it's thirty-two hours.
Thirty-two hours.
But municipal is totally different, and you have to be careful.
And that one was referred to sponsor by the Finance Committee. I keep forgetting that the, Article one was a favorable recommendation, Article two is referred to sponsor, which basically says, we don't know enough to have an informed opinion, and it's outside the purview of the Finance Committee.
Right.
Whether the water company wants a new line running in their property or not, really is nothing the Finance Committee has to have their opinion on. Zoning bylaws, Article number four.
So this is the change in the state law for accessory dwelling units, which we've historically called the so-called in-law apartments, since I understand it now that it's more expanded usage, and so we're bringing our town laws into compliance with state law.
Well, there's a couple of things that are key here, too, is that this is part, as we all know, we watch the news, Massachusetts being one of the most expensive states to live in, and so, you know, these, the forty B projects that are floating around, and they're all, a lot of them are being pushed from the state level because the workforce, as we all know, is a real problem in the state of Massachusetts because it's expensive to live here. This is part of the affordable housing, you know, to try to make Massachusetts more affordable, and I think what's key in here, and I was actually looking at this, is, as we all know presently, on, as Andy said, an in-law apartment, when you build one, and if unfortunately that person passes on, you can't rent that unit out, but now, there's a stipulation in this law that's gonna allow you to do that after the fact.
Right.
Again, trying to enhance affordable housing.
Yeah, because when you say in-law apartment, you think of your mother-in-law, your father-in-law, that it's time, they need some help, you wanna keep them in the family, but you don't have a full kitchen, a full entrance necessary.
Right.
This is like those show tiny houses.
Right.
Where you could put a little house, and it's limited, I think it's like nine hundred square.
Nine hundred square feet.
You know, or a certain percent, up to nine hundred.
Yeah, it's up to a half, half of the square footage of the exist, of the main dwelling not to exceed nine hundred feet.
And there's a lot of people worried because when you look at adding that extra little house in the back, and if you put a family in there with a kid or two, it's gonna put a burden on the town. The state needs it because we need the workforce.
Right.
But I remember Paul Abadanza, our finance advisor, I asked him once, saying, for every dollar that we collect in tax, what does it cost us? He came back and said residential, a dollar eighty. Costs us a buck eighty in services for every dollar we take in resident tax.
Right.
I said, really? How do we make up for it? He goes, commercial is eighteen cents on the dollar, industrial is sixteen cents. Because you think about it, sixty-some percent of our budget is school.
Right.
Commercial buildings don't have kids.
Don't have kids.
You know, commercial buildings pay for their own trash, commercial buildings pay for a lot.
Right.
So, I mean, there is concern, like the forty Bs. You know, think about years ago, Mike, Laurelwood.
Yeah.
The bus showed up at Laurelwood, the whole complex had two kids, because there were one and two bedrooms. Now, at the prices of rent, I mean, I'm stunned at what it costs to rent the place, and they're talking fifteen hundred dollars for an apartment in Milford.
Well, the new, the new complexes that are going up, they're more than fifteen hundred. The one bedrooms, in most cases, are twenty-one to twenty-two hundred. The two and three bedrooms, the three bedrooms can be as much as three thousand, but again, to the point is, you know, the three of us sit here and say, well, for three thousand a month, you could have a mortgage. The problem being is, they don't have the down payment.
Right.
They have the, they budget to the, whatever the rent is, they'll budget to whatever their mortgage payment is, the problem is that they don't have the twenty percent that they need on a half a million dollar house for the down payment.
Right. But even if they do, I mean, we've all, we've all had homes, have homes, it doesn't end there. At least a condo or something, the maintenance is a lot less.
Yeah.
And you start looking at what it costs you to maintain a home today.
Right.
It's a scary movie.
Yeah.
So again, referred to sponsor on the Finance Committee's recommendation. Article five, noise.
Yeah, so, I understand the police chief is requesting a change in the law that would allow them to fine the owners of rental properties because he didn't think that he was getting sufficient cooperation, and it's an important issue, right? I mean, it's a quality of life issue, you wanna make sure, you know, neighborhoods are, you know, abiding by the laws, and nuisance laws, and noise laws, and the like, so this will give him an additional tool.
Yeah, I think that was the most important point, is when Robbie came and said, right now, I go to the tenants, they don't own the place, if they don't pay, what do you do? You're not gonna arrest them and lock them up and put them away, but the owners have no direct liability. This kinda says, take care of your own house. If the neighbors are complaining, you're gonna share, and I think it's a three hundred dollar fine every time.
That's right. And a lot of the properties are owned by people that don't live in Milford. You know, they're investment properties for them.
Yeah, and if you look at it that way, if I'm an investor, and you're soaking up three hundred bucks of whack, that's cutting down on my return, so maybe I'll pay attention.
Right, right.
You know, I'm, it's cold to say, I don't care about Milford, don't care about your neighborhood.
Right.
But I care about my return, otherwise, I wouldn't be investing in these properties.
Right.
So this was a long time coming, and it can be abused right now, so hopefully, town meeting will move forward on this one.
Right.
Was favorable from the Finance Committee.
That's right.
I think most of these are favorable from Select Board, too.
Yes.
Article six, Boiler for Birch Street.
And HVAC for School Street.
Right, it's a twofer.
It's just another example, Al, to be honest with you, and we talk about it all the time, is, it used to be that, you know, we would build these buildings in the town, particularly the schools, as we all know, and not maintain them. This is an example of, you know, people look at the Birch Street Fire Station, wait a minute, that's a brand-new station. Well, it's not a brand-new station.
No.
It looks like it's brand-new, but it's not, and as things come up that need to be repaired, we need to repair them, because you can't just makeshift things because down the road, it's even more costly.
And to Chief Nelson's credit, this has been in the plan, the capital plan, both the HVAC three years from now, he moved that forward because the HVAC unit failed.
Right.
And it was costing them too much. They're apparently up there, firefighters were using hoses to cool down the air conditioning units.
Right.
You can't.
No.
No, and Al chairs the Capital Subcommittee, and they do an excellent job of projecting out multiple years of what we anticipate the needs are gonna be on the various properties, so that's a, that's a well-thought-out process.
So the HVAC, we had planned on replacing in two more years, but because it failed early, it's moved forward, but I think the point is, it was on the plan.
Right.
Right.
And we're not waiting till things crash around us.
Right.
We're taking some preemptive steps.
Well, and as we talk about, you know, we do use the capital plan, but if there's an emergency situation, we move it forward.
Article seven, again, Fire Department, it's to, this is the second phase of the three-phase paving plan.
Right.
Birch Street, apparently, right out front of where the trucks come out, is deteriorated, and we'd expected it this year or next year.
Right.
To repave it, so this is part two of three. Article eight.
So that's to establish a stabilization account for the Water Department. Now, the Water Department and the Sewer Department are so-called enterprise funds, so they operate semi-independently from the town, as opposed to the rest of the town departments, and I assume they wanna establish this so that they can start doing some planning of their own for investment in the future.
It's worked out well with the Sewer Department, where they take some of the retained earnings, because both sewer and water, they don't have small problems. You know, I mean, you remember Ivy Lane, when that manhole, or whatever they call it, flooded, and it wiped out the whole end of Ivy Lane? That's not a cheap fix.
Well, look at, a month and a half ago, we had three major water main breaks, you know, within a week, week and a half of each other, you know?
So the idea here is to create, we call it an enterprise fund, it's a stabilization account.
Right.
It's a rainy day fund, so that they can have a little bit of room for unexpected issues.
Right, right.
And that was favorable.
But I think it's important, too, is that, you know, when people see that, you know, some people would say, oh, see, that, that, the water company wasn't a good investment. That's, that's not true, that's not true at all. This is just, as you said, Al, this is a rainy day fund, you know, putting away some money, so when something does happen that's major, we have the funds to fix it.
And again, you're hearing people say, see, we thought we were gonna save all this money by buying the water company, our rates have gone up. Yes, they have, but nowhere near what they would've gone up.
That's correct.
You know, I mean, I'm not happy with a sixteen hundred dollar water bill for last quarter. You know, it's far from it, but I'm scared to think what that sixteen hundred dollar bill would be.
Right.
If it was still private.
Right.
You know, that water company, hats off to the three commissioners, they've lived up to all their promises.
Absolutely.
And it's still overpriced, it's like saying the taxes, we're paying too much in taxes. Yes. It's like saying, do you love your mother? Of course. Do you think we're paying too much in taxes? Yes. But what, look around us and pick one town around us that you'd rather be on their rates.
Right, right.
So.
And get the services that you get in the town.
Well, and get the services.
Right.
So Article eight was a favorable recommendation. Article nine is being passed over.
Being passed over.
That was a program that our IT Director, some of it is mandated, of putting closed-circuit TV cameras in critical areas, like Water Department equipment, some of it is defensive to protect our fire stations and all, but we'll get through that come springtime, because again, what a surprise, it was three, four hundred thousand dollars to put all these cameras around town.
Right.
So that's the one that we're gonna have to really have a good, long discussion as to what they're being used for, how they're being used for, and to Chris George's credit, he didn't wanna rush it.
Right, and it shouldn't be rushed.
No, I mean, anything that you spend hundreds of thousands of dollars shouldn't be, but this has privacy questions.
Right.
Not that I would think Chris would do anything not up and up on it, but still, people have the right to ask the questions before they vote.
Yes, they do.
Article number ten.
So this is the Family Services Unit that the Police Department has been running for a few years now, which is a combination of two police officers and some social work clinicians that have been dealing with various sociological issues in town, and this has all been funded with a state grant, and the police chief learned very recently that the state grant was going to be discontinued this year, which seemed like an unwise move from the state's standpoint, but he apparently has funding for the clinician component. So the Police Department is looking for the town to fund for this coming year, those two officers that are in the family unit. Now, you know, we historically, in the Finance Committee, have had concerns about grants that are temporary, that fund town personnel, because then if the grants disappear, you've created an additional personnel cost for the town, but I think this is a little bit of a different circumstance. Number one, since I understand that the grant was intended to be indefinite, and that was the expectation, and secondly, it sounds like the program has certainly met its, exceeded its expectations, so for those reasons, the Finance Committee voted favorable to fund that.
Yeah, it was kind of ironic that Chief Tassino gets this wonderful letter, saying, what a great program, we want you to talk to other towns about it, we'd love to reproduce it. Oh, and by the way, we don't have enough money in this year's budget, so we're cutting your grant, not just for this year, but we're stopping it. Maybe someday, it'll come back.
Well, I think what's important, too, is, as the three of us know, because we were at that meeting the other night, is, you know, Milford's, you know, Family Services Unit, you know, is being looked at, you know, by the International Chief of Police Association, you know, because of what we've been able to do, and, you know, Robbie and Amy Leoni were both there with statistics showing where we've started from and where we are now, you know, with, you know, substance abuse and mental health issues within the community, you know, having this, this program in effect, you know, and that's why we need to, we need to continue to support it, so we keep those numbers down.
I think the key is with taking thousands of issues, thousands of incidents, away from the foot police, you know, the troopers that are on the ground.
Right.
Because you can't send in a clinician to an unknown situation, they're not trained for that.
Right.
And they don't wanna go in by themselves to an unknown situation, so sending an officer with them is the right move.
Absolutely.
And it's proved itself over and over, because otherwise, you don't know what's gonna go on, and I can't blame a physician for saying, I'm not going into a black hole and putting my life in danger.
Well, they're not trained.
So if we didn't do this, if we didn't continue this program, Robbie would have to allocate these visits, thousands a year, to the normal officers.
Right.
Which takes them off their normal duties, which is a reduction in police efforts.
Right.
And if anybody's read about Minnesota and all, when they cut back on their police, apparently, the bad people don't feel bad and stop committing crimes.
No.
Again, favorable, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand that Robbie needs, that the town needs, to finish the program this year, and knowing that come next year, they'll come back for the full amount, unless the state finds the money.
Right, right.
Yeah, unless I'm young, thin, and have hair. Article eleven, there's been confusion over this, is the Veterans Office sponsoring, correcting the typos, is that what?
It's, it's twofold, it's correcting typos, and there are some names that, that have been added, and there are still some that need to be added, to the existing monument in Draper Park for the Vietnam and Korea War errors.
Yeah, and that's what I meant by typos, there's like a hundred and seventy names that.
Right.
Didn't get added on when we originally did the monument, so now this, trying to remember.
It was about seventeen thousand.
About seventeen thousand, because John Pillar has put in some of the money he has.
Right.
And there's an unsung hero of this town. If you remember back, before John Pillar came in, every year, we were going through hundreds of thousands of dollars of deficit, and somehow, John got his arms around it, getting better benefits to our vets, because nobody wanted to cut the benefits. It was just the administrative role of how do we do it so that the state and the feds pay more of it than we do.
Right, right.
And John's a pretty straight shooter, I mean, he would never cheap out on the benefits for the vets.
Right.
But I liked what he, the way he arranged it, and all of a sudden, he wasn't coming before you, saying, I spent all the money and it's half the year still in front of Okay, Article twelve, oops.
Yeah, well, this is, to be honest with you, Al, only because, having gone to the Fireman's Memorial, and seeing this engine sitting behind the fire station and not in service, you know, and we know between our police calls and between our fire calls in this community, they're at an all-time high, and to have a piece of equipment sitting behind the fire station with some damage to it, you know, waiting for appropriate, to appropriate the funds to repair it, we have to do this, we gotta get that engine back in service.
Chief Nelson came before us and said, look, it happened under my watch, it's my fault, and I agree with him, he hired a human being.
Right.
That's, he hired a human being, a human being made a mistake and had an accident.
Right.
Okay, I don't think any of us can say we've never had an accident.
Exactly, well, I'm not gonna with you. Not lately, yeah.
No, some of us had car repair facilities that they could hide their accidents. Others, when you look at Engine Five, it's a million-dollar engine, and there's very few places that are certified to fix it.
Right.
So when you start saying it's a hundred thousand dollars, yeah, but it's a million-point something to buy a new one, so.
Right, and that's just another example, Al, you and I both know, you know, the new ladder truck, when we wrote the check, was one point one million. You're not gonna maintain that? You have to maintain these vehicles, you know, for the amount of use they get.
Article thirteen, Waste and Recycling Manager.
So this is to create two potential new positions, but this is not a funding request. This is the Personnel Board asking to establish a title of Waste and Recycling Manager and an Assistant Collector to the Treasurer, but we have not been asked to have a human being fill either of those slots or fund those slots, this is just to create the statistical position.
Yeah, but let's, let's face it, you don't create the position if you're not gonna intend on filling it.
I assume that there will be requests coming our way.
I have a funny feeling that come the May meeting, these two positions will be discussed as to the need for both of them, but you're right, as of right now, this just creates the positions using the Personnel Board metrics. Article fourteen, Vacation Leave, this one is going to need more study, and again, I applaud the Personnel Board by saying, there's some questions we're not quite ready to answer appropriately.
Yeah, this is being passed over.
Right, so I applaud them, because.
Yes.
When they say it's not quite ready, and they're gonna pass it over, okay, to me, that's the right move.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, Al, I, sitting here reading this, I would even question, because if you read it, it says five years to ten years, fifteen years to three years, seven years to ten years, fifteen years to three years, it doesn't, you know...
I think what it meant was, we're gonna go down from X to Y, but again, when it's confusing like that.
Right.
And I gotta admit, if I can't write it down in plain old Portuguese speak, then I'm not gonna vote for it, so hats off to them for taking the initiative. Okay, Article fifteen, Retro Pay.
Retro pay, just dealing with the union, settling their contracts, and you gotta retro back.
Well, a lot of times, people ask the question, why don't you budget the right amount? And it's simple, if I'm going in to negotiate, you know, Mike, when you were selling cars, I'm going in saying, I can pay twelve thousand dollars for this car. Well, where do you think you're gonna start? Well, no, Al, you should only pay eight. You know, no, if we tell the union negotiators that we can pay up to three or four percent, that's gonna be where they start. So what we tell people to do is budget zero increase, then come back the first year as to what your percentage increase was, and we'll refund it.
Well, and also, Al, and to your point there, is that, you know, when you go into negotiations, as you know, you know, they can go on sometimes for, you know, a year or more, where you can't stop providing those services, police, fire, and, and, and your cemeteries, looking here, and your highway department, you're not gonna have your highway department working in the wintertime when it's snowing, so you continue to negotiate in good faith, once you settle the contract, again, in good faith, you have to back up retro.
You have to give the retro pay.
You have to give them retro pay.
Okay, so that takes care of the highways, the cemetery, park department, all the new contract and the retro. Sixteen, Stair Treads.
Little bit of a loose-end capital cleanup item for the Police Department, it's about forty thousand dollars, as I recall.
Yeah, I mean, again, they're doing the right thing, because they had money left over from the station renovations, they can't... They can't, well, they technically probably could, but they shouldn't. And Robbie's doing the right thing, saying, I didn't have stair treads in my plan. Even though I've got the money to do it, I should come back to town meeting and say the stair treads have worn out, we didn't include those initially, but we need them. So I'd like to take the money and apply it.
Well, and again, Al, to what I said earlier, and, and I don't mean to jump ahead on you, but sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, when you look at them, really, again, it's, it's the town being proactive, taking care of the buildings in our community. So the stair treads, you know, sixteen is the stair treads at the police station, you gotta fix it, you're not gonna fix the stair treads. You know, you look at, at, at seventeen and eighteen, both of the library, as you know, the fire suppression system at, at the, the library is in dire straits and you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna fix the fire suppression system in a library, you know, and, and again, in, in, in Article eighteen, you know, again, the, the library for furnishings. We have a responsibility to maintain our buildings.
So this one just, to me, is the right way of doing it. I haven't, I need, I have funding, but only town meeting should make the decision if I put them together.
Right, right.
When we go to seventeen, oh, this is maintenance, it's a fire suppression system.
Right.
You know, and it's funny because, um, people don't understand the difference between a dry and a wet system. And it's just the very end of the pipes. In the old days, they used dry systems. Problem was all the gunk. It's like when we heard about, um, the pilings in Boston Harbor when the water went down. All of a sudden, those pilings that were underwater are exposed and they deteriorate. Well, the same thing here. If you don't have fully wet system, the last bits un- underwater in the pipes, you get rust.
Right.
You get deterioration and apparently it's full of sludge. If we did have a fire right now, the first thing coming out of there is all the sludge all over the books we're trying to protect.
Right.
The problem here was, we started out, and again, part of it is that you got volunteers. These are not construction people. So when they explained in a bid request, it was fifty-five thousand. Then it went up, when they said, yeah, but now you gotta do this, this and this also, it became a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Town meeting approved the extra money. They did it right, they said, we only have fifty, it's gonna be a hundred seventy-five. We'll go back to town meeting. So they got a hundred seventy, a hundred seventy, a hundred seventy-five. Now, what they learned is, oh, that didn't include putting everything back. So when we start ripping the pipes out of the walls, somebody has to recreate the walls.
Right.
So now it was gonna be four hundred ninety thousand, the bids came in, four thirty-five and four ninety. Um, the FinCom recommended that they hire, I don't wanna say a full clerk of the works, cause this isn't big enough to have a clerk of the works like Jonathan has for the high school.
Right.
But a construction manager, somebody who has experience to see over the project. Because at that point, we wouldn't get this, as you referred to Andy, hyperinflation.
Yes.
That all of a sudden, we thought this was fifty-five, then it went to one seventy, now it goes to four hundred. The problem was, it was probably three hundred some thousand to begin with.
Right.
We just didn't understand, we didn't know the questions to ask.
Right.
Article eighteen, this is just normal furnishings. The carpets worn out, down, we're getting ton of traffic, which is good.
Right.
Kids sit on chairs.
Right.
Chairs wear out. And three years ago, we budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars to replace carpets and furniture.
Right.
Three years have gone by. Yeah, I feel comfortable supporting this one, cause it's been in the, the maintenance plan for years and will keep going that way. Article nineteen, The Fence at the Cemetery. We have a fence. Trees fell on the fence.
Right.
Need a new fence.
Need a new fence. I mean, we can go into all the details. And by the way, anybody who's interested, Paul Abadanza does keep all of the materials presented to the Finance Committee on any article in the Finance Committee folder. So that any town meeting member or any resident, especially any resident, it's their money, can have access to it and see it. So all the, we're not going through the details of sixty-five thousand dollars of fence work, but it's all available.
Right.
Cause it's their money.
Right.
Um, Article twenty is a big trailer.
Yeah, you gotta move the equipment, you gotta take care of the landscaping.
When they just did Vernon Grove, they had a little trailer. And the little trailer was fine for moving things around. We then got requests through the Select Board to the town meeting of people saying, I'm going up to Purchase Street Cemetery. And you're really not showing respect for my family.
Right.
Grass is too high, just nobody really owned it. They had a family that maintained it just out of pride. And then all of a sudden, they pass on and you need somebody to maintain it.
Right.
So the Vernon Grove Cemetery Committee said, we'll do it. Problem is, now they gotta schlep all the equipment.
Correct.
From Vernon Grove to Purchase Street, and the trailer is too small. So it puts the equipment in danger of getting bashed and making those trips across Milford back and forth. It's not pleasant.
Right.
That's been on the Capitol Plan for two or three years, so I feel comfortable with that one. Article twenty-one.
Kind of sprinkle a system. You know, it goes back to, again, maintaining, the maintenance of our buildings, you know, and, 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 you know, hopefully, we never have a fire there, but if we do, we've gotta have a system that works properly.
Yeah, he's had two or three failures this year.
And this system, I think, is about forty years old.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, Scotty ran out of sources for the bubble gum and the scotch tape that he's been patching. I think the problem is, he fixes one hole, it works. Then over here, the extra pressure, it blows another hole. So the good news on that one, I mean, he spent eight grand already in repairs. So it shows you, eight thousand dollars worth of repairing pipe is not trivial.
No.
But he had estimated it was two hundred thousand dollars. He thinks he can get away with a buck and a quarter. Which is still ridiculous money, but what can you do?
Not as much as the library suppression system.
Right.
Again, favorable recommendation. Um, Article twenty-two is a typo.
Right.
Um, we had a, purchased a new truck, and it's a typo both on the summary sheet, on the FinCom report and on the warrant, cause it's a dump truck.
Dump truck, right.
That somehow got put in there that has a mounted leaf vacuum. That was a cut and paste era. It's a nineteen ninety-nine, twenty-five-year-old dump truck that has finally seen its life expectancy come to an end. Has nothing to do with leaves, but I, I didn't catch it initially and in the summary, the last page, page, say it's nineteen, says leaf truck, it should just say dump truck. But that's, the dump truck's been on the, uh, Capitol Plan for a number of years.
Yes. But it's important now that you, and, and thank you for bringing it up, cause again, that came up the other night in the meeting. I don't want people driving by the, the highway department and seeing the three beautiful shiny leaf trucks and saying, why are they getting another one? It's not, it's not a leaf truck, it's a dump truck.
Article twenty-three, change to the tax title payment.
To comply with state law. Sounds like, uh, state law is giving a little bit more flexibility to the delinquent taxpayer, and so, uh, our treasurer is modifying our laws to comply with that. I mean, there may be a little bit of a adverse financial impact on the town, as I recall.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that people have to understand is, we're playing it square. You know, you've heard about states down south where you owe ten thousand dollars, they repossess your house, they sell it for a hundred thousand and they keep, the town keeps the whole hundred.
Correct.
That discussion came up before and we said, that's just not right. If you owe ten thousand, now all in, legal fees, everything. And we sell it for eleven thousand, we give you back the thousand. And now, one thing I do admire Chris Pillar is the state law gives him a lot more leeway in deciding how much to charge as penalties and interest and all that good stuff.
Right.
And in this plan, he decided he doesn't want that responsibility. There's too much room for wiggling too much.
Right.
And when it comes down to people paying, I agree with him, you don't want any wiggle room.
No.
The law is the law.
Right.
Whether you're rich, poor, middle, whatever, you pay the same rate. So this would bring us back into compliance. Now, the interest rates have gone down. Cause we typically carry, I was surprised, two and a half million dollars of, um, inventory of money that's owed to us.
Right.
But Chris thinks that it's not gonna change much. The interest we gain, um, will be a little less. The down payments, instead of being twenty-five percent, will be like ten percent.
Right.
But he said that two and a half million will stay pretty steady.
Right, but I think you make a valid point too, Al, it, it, it really, like, first of all, and the most important, we don't wanna take anybody's property. You know, we wanna do the best we can to work with anybody, if, if that does happen or, or we get to that point, this is a real good guideline, so if somebody was to say to us, well, you know, that doesn't seem fair, well.
Here it is.
Here it is, you, you know.
And whether you're Mike Walsh or Joe Smith or whatever, the rules are the rules.
For everybody, you know, so it's important.
And I think that's the important thing, is people wanna make sure they're getting a fair deal.
It's, yeah, it's, it's.
And an equal deal.
Exactly.
Article twenty-four is being passed over. Um, Parks Department is looking to get information on finishing up the project. Because we had a town meeting, um, allocation that put us up to two million dollars to do the bandstand, the town park, the town storage house and the Pearl Street Basketball Court.
That's right.
Basketball court in front of the youth center. And apparently, we ran out of money when we did the town park. So now we have to go out and get additional funding to do the other three, if we're gonna do them.
Right, and there is a grant for the town park work that might create a financial incentive for us to do the building work, um, but we've agreed to push this off to the May town meeting.
Yeah, that'll be brought up under special circumstance, and I think people should understand that in May, we've agreed with the Select Board for many years that capital would only be discussed at the May meeting if it was an emergency or special circumstance. Like when Master Electric said, if you get some amount of money, we'll fund eighty percent of redoing the, uh, lights in the police station, but you have to do it by March. No, by August. Well, it made no sense to give up eighty percent of an expense you're gonna do anyway.
Correct.
So this one will be pushed off till May, at least May.
Right.
We'll, we'll discuss it. Article twenty-five.
So this is the, uh, the Board of Health wants to retain a consultant to assist with, um, oversight of the local housing laws. Uh, this, as I understand it, would help them create an inventory of the multifamily housing and develop a program for inspections. Um, you know, we had the Neighborhood Housing Task Force that was developed a number of years ago and uh, I believe because of COVID and a few other circumstances, uh, the program hasn't been maintained as much as we would like over the last few years. So, uh, this is an opportunity to reinvigorate that program. And I, I think this, in my mind, is a lot like Article Five with the police department on the, um, the nuisance and the fines. I mean, this is important, uh, that we require compliance with housing laws for a variety of reasons, monetary and non-monetary.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, we put a big push. And people thought, well, you're just trying to collect taxes on it. And that was far from the truth. A house that has wiring for a hundred amps for one kitchen, one family, has a hard time supporting two or three families if it's broken up with three kitchens and multiple hot plates.
Right, and I think it's also important, because as we all know, there's, there's, there's a lot of discussion in the town of Milford about overcrowding and how many people are living in residence, and this is necessary funding to continue, you know, we are definitely out there, we are definitely doing inspections, and this is the money that's necessary to allow us to continue and to enhance those inspections that we're doing.
And this is a quarter million dollars, it's a lot of money. But the Board of Health does not have the bandwidth to do an all-out.
Correct.
Assessment. This, in my mind, not only identifies the problems, but gives us a, an idea of the bandwidth we need.
Correct.
Because more and more, apparently, a lot of the landlords who don't live in Milford are splitting up the, uh, houses and the apartments. And when you have two families, three families living in a one-family area, again, they wanna eat, so they put hot plates in.
Yeah.
You know, hair dryers, hot plates, anything that uses up a lot of electric can tax the wires and cause fires.
Right.
On top of that, parking. When you have three families and six or seven cars trying to fit into one family house allocation, the neighbors then suffer.
Yeah, and the trash pickup, I mean, there are all sorts of spillover effects, right?
Yeah, it was funny when they said that one of the ways they find out is when the LaZott family home wants six trash.
For a single family.
For a single family.
That's exactly how, that, that's true, that's how we, you know, they call them, they call the Board of Health and say, geez, we only got one blue bucket and one gray bucket. We need two more of each. And they go and they look and say, well, that's a family, single-family dwelling.
I mean, I, I was not happy with having a bucket provided, but that damn bucket, I haven't filled it up yet. It's a lot bigger than I thought it would be.
Yes.
So, you know, the idea of saying, my family needs three of them, uh, it, it does beg a question.
Yeah.
So I think this is more quality of life.
Right.
Because the amount of money we're gonna make on this is not gonna cover the expense.
Right.
I agree.
Article twenty-six, this is replacing one of the eight special vans that were purchased years ago.
Yes.
When you get over the emotion of how they were purchased, cause a lot of people still ask about this. Uh, one question we asked, um, Mike Nicholson and Dave Levine on the FinCom, is to find out if the numbers still work in our favor. Cause originally, we were hiring out, um, drivers. You know, we'd go to a taxi service or a car service and say, little Johnny has to be taken to Newton for special needs. And there's no choice, you have to do it.
Right.
And when they figured out how much we were paying for that, it became painfully obvious that if we had the number of these little vans, we could save a lot of money. Legitimate question, I mean, this one is gonna be sixty thousand dollars for a van, so you've gotta go through with it. But before next year, the next van comes up, we wanna make sure that the numbers still are favorable towards doing this versus outsourcing it.
Right.
Article twenty-seven.
So these were funds that were in the, uh, the town budget for an economic development director, as I recall.
Correct.
And the town administrator said that, um, they had difficulty filling the position, finding a person with the right set of skills. So they'd like to repurpose that budget item for an assistant town administrator, um, which he believes is consistent with the size of the town.
We start thinking, Milford is a hundred and sixty-three million-dollar corporation.
Correct.
I know we don't like thinking about it that way, but, and you got, one guy is admin. So the question came out, are we best suited having an extra person in development or an extra person in admin? And God bless Rick for doing everything he does, but I think the bandwidth is starting to fill up.
Well, and, and, you know, Al, this is, you know, a great example of, and, and, again, I'm gonna go back to the, the fire chief. We know the fire chief's realignment of the department and recruiting, you know, the captain's positions. And Amane Valapoyne said, with all lieutenants, your, your senior command staff is lieutenant's, and you have, you know, say, a catastrophic fire, and two lieutenants show up to the, well, who, who's in charge? And this is another example, is that when, you know, the town administrator goes on vacation, well, is it the finance director? Is it the personnel director? Is it town council? Who, who's in charge? This is gonna clearly define that, that when the administrator is on vacation, out sick, at a conference...
There's a mini Valani ready to step in.
Exactly. No different than the superintendent, assistant superintendent, fire chief, deputy chief, police chief, deputy chief.
And I think the fundamental problem is, the amount of day-to-day work is starting to overwhelm one person.
Absolutely.
You know, if you think about a company that a hundred and sixty million dollars, I mean, we did the same thing with human resources, where for years, we just kinda muddled along. And now, all of a sudden, you can see the benefits of having
Absolutely.
a seasoned HR person.
Right.
Article twenty-eight, I have no clue. It's a liquor license.
Right, and I'll be honest with you, this came to my eyes, somebody brought it to my attention the other day, and I happened to, to look into it, and, yeah, you know, I, personally, I don't know why we're petitioning for another liquor license, but...
Well, I think we're out of liquor licenses. Do they ever go away?
Well, there is a valid point, this conversation, there are some that could be purchased
Yes.
in town.
That's what I'm wondering, saying, you know, once we issue one, is it perpetual, and you never give it up, or if you're not using it? Because years ago, the question came up on a couple of licenses, that the establishment had shut down for two years.
Well, I was just gonna say, or there's some that, you know, should be looked into coming back to the board that aren't being used properly.
I mean, when, when something is no longer in use, a license, usually those are capable of being resold if there are not enough in the community. I mean, before they started adding licenses in Boston, I can remember, we were selling liquor licenses in Boston for a quarter of a million bucks or more.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about this.
Right.
You know?
Well, I think, the question is, do we need more licenses? People who own them will probably tell you, no, because the more you issue...
Correct.
The less valuable they have, yeah. It's more competition.
This is for, I believe, the Wal, the old Walgreens?
Correct. Correct.
So we're gonna have to wait till town meeting. Apologize, we did not get the information on this one for you. Twenty-nine. Fire station, PFA and PFOA questions.
Some fire foam that was used in the past.
Correct.
Created some sort of environmental issue in the adjoining property.
Well, I think the issue was that we never knew back when that the PFAs and the PFOAs were forever chemicals. These are like DDT, they're incredibly effective. You know, if you think about, as an insecticide, DDT was one of the best, next to DDE, because they were so non-polar, that they got into the fat cells of your body, of the insect's body, and sat there, like a time bomb. You know, with people, you lose weight, all of a sudden, your body starts metabolizing the fat, releases them into your body, causes all sorts of havoc. It was only in the last few years that forever chemicals were found. Your Teflon skillets, your foam, all have them in it. And it comes out of the foam into the water supply. We have no remediation plan for getting rid of them. I think they're doing carbon now, trying to minimize it, but it's still not enough. But this is something people have to understand, that it wasn't the Milford Fire Department doing anything wrong.
No, 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 no.
They were following the industry.
Correct.
And all of a sudden, surprise. Now, the question is, how contaminated is the soil around the fire station at Birch Street? Because the Bellingham Water Supply is awful close. So this would be, I can't remember, I think it was ninety thousand dollars to study...
That sounds right.
But this is the nose of the camel. The nose of the camel's coming in the tent. This is not gonna fix anything, it's not for remediation. This is to give us an idea of how bad the problem is.
Right. And as we know, you know, cancer among firefighters is a, is a problem in this country right now, to the point where now their equipment is being manufactured with the protective material they used to use is no longer being used, because, this is another example, they're, they're using these chemicals, you know, as part of their daily job, who now have been deemed hazardous waste. We gotta get rid of it.
And more expansive of a problem is the fact that the PFAs come out of the foam into the dirt, washed into the water supply.
Right.
And then, people are drinking the water.
Right.
So ninety thousand is the nose of the camel. This is an issue we'll be discussing for years. And the last one, stabilization.
Savings account.
Savings.
So, we have seven point four million this year in so-called free cash, and I'll be talking a little bit about free cash next Monday night, but free cash is basically either additional revenues that were above projections of the town, or expenses that were lower than projected. It's almost like a tax refund. It's still your money, it's not a windfall, but that number gets determined at this time of year, which makes it a good opportunity for us to look at the non-budgetary items that we need to fund. So we do three or four things with that money. Number one, we set aside some money for this year's capital. Number two, we put a little extra money in the kitty, the so-called stabilization, or leave some money in the existing bank account. What we're also doing in part this year is increasing the levy relief, which means giving people an additional reduction on what their tax rate could be for the year. So there's some ultimate reduction in what the tax liability will be for all the citizens otherwise. So we take all those things into account, and the, the article is basically to authorize the allocation of the funds.
Well, we went into the year hoping to take six million dollars off the tax rate
Right.
with levy relief. With what we spent in the spring, it got down to a projected four point three.
Right.
Putting two point seven million back into it brings us real close to the six million we hoped.
Right. But, you know, you know, Al, and I think what's important, too, when you and I both serve on the new committee for, and I, I know it's a word that a lot of people don't wanna hear, the high school, and I'll go back to an example, is when we bought the ladder truck, we wrote a check for the ladder truck, because over the years, when we had the opportunity, we kept putting money aside into the stabilization account, you heard me call it a savings account, and when we did order the new ladder truck, we wrote a check and paid for it. Well, as we know, there is a high school, there is a high school coming at some point, and it's gonna be a sizable amount of money, so we need to start tucking money away to do the best we can to offset our end of what that expense is going to be.
And at the same time, doing the best we can for the people who are paying these taxes.
That's right.
Because as I've said, the people who built Milford were here because a group of people put blood, sweat, and tears, and a lot of them are living on social security.
Right.
And you mentioned three thousand dollars for an apartment. I'm having a heart attack with about fifteen hundred.
Right.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
And to our six loyal viewers, and probably with the town meeting members watching, who are up to seven or eight, thank you for joining. Again, the idea here is to give you information. If you want details, call town hall, go on the website, look it up. And as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight.